All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May Planning Commission meeting. Let's go ahead and open in prayer by our chaplain, city chaplain, Tim Doolin. Please stand with me, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve the community of Cabot. Thank you for the wisdom and talents and dedication of each member of this planning commission as we gather to make decisions that affect our city's growth, development, and future. Father, we ask for your guidance. Help us to act with integrity, fairness, and foresight, while it grant us clarity in our decisions, unity in our goals, and compassion for the needs of all residents. Bless the city, its leaders, its workers, and every citizen who calls Cabot home. Father, may we all do here today to contribute a stronger and safer and more vibrant community for generations to come. Father, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tim. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, let's go ahead and have roll call. Laura?
Bird?
Here.
Connect?
Here.
Low?
Here.
Prater?
Here.
Young?
Here.
O'Gwen?
Here.
DeArman?
Here.
All right, seven zero, we do have a quorum. I could go ahead and get acceptance of the meeting minutes from our march. Well, let me back up. Sorry. I was over in Board of Adjustment. April Planning Commission meeting?
Motion to approve.
Got motion from DeArman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from, is that Ronnie? All right, roll call vote, please, Laura.
Bird?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
All right, seven zero, those minutes are approved. Now, we will shift gears over into our Board of Adjustment meeting, and I'll ask for approval of the march minutes. Got any corrections or changes?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Low. Do I have a second? Second from Prater. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
All right, seven zero, minutes are approved. All right, I guess I need to do roll call for Board of Adjustment, don't I? Let's go ahead and do that.
Bird?
Here.
Low?
Here.
Prater?
Yes.
Connect?
Here.
Young?
Here.
O'Gwen?
Here.
DeArman?
Here.
All right, seven zero, we do have a quorum at the Board of Adjustment meeting. Let's go ahead and start with our first item in new business for Board of Adjustment, the variance.
Variance 400 West Pine Street, all parking to be located off-street in joint use agreement with First Baptist Church, Marshall Butler with Pinnacle Advisors. Okay, so this is a variance application for all the onsite parking to be located off-site with a joint use agreement with the First Baptist Church. As you can see in the staff report, the property is currently zoned O1 for office. The church owns the property and is looking to rent the property out for office use. Currently, there are no parking spots on this site. The same person that is going to rent this facility also currently rents the adjacent house across the street from the church. So they currently have a joint use agreement between, with the existing building at, just across the street. But the staff did ask for a draft parking use agreement for this new property and then a sketch to address how they are going to have ADA access across the street. So those are the outstanding items that are in the staff report. The applicant is here if you have any questions for him on the couple outstanding items, or if you have any questions for me, I can address them.
All right, anyone here representing the applicant? Marshall, come up.
Good evening.
Marshall, want to add to any of Laura's report, or get any?
No, I've got the sketch, and I don't have a lease agreement. We do have an indemnification agreement for the other parking lot agreement that we have for the other building, but I don't have a lease agreement or anything like that for the, for you guys to review.
There are a couple other outstanding items on that list as well.
Yeah, it was just the proposed parking use agreement and then a sketch showing where the shared parking spaces are going to be used at, and then how the ADA access is going to be provided from First Baptist to the, this piece of property.
It feels like court, so I don't know if I can approach you, Your Honor.
Bailiff.
Now, as far as the ADA access, Gary, I think you were referencing something about cutting out the curb. It's parking lot, you know, follow that drawing you have there.
You state your name?
Gary Walker, member of First Baptist Cabot.
Okay.
It's item F is the parking lot there across from the property 400 West Pine. We will cut the curb there, our curb there, curb and gutter, and we'll put in a five-foot walk there and strip the street, goes across, right across to handicap ramp access that's already there on the property for the building.
So there's already ADA spaces in this parking lot F that they'll be, or are you going to create?
They'll have to be striped for handicapped, yes.
Will it meet code in terms of the slope? As far as?
Yeah.
How flat is this?
Well, the handicap ramp already does.
Okay. Commissioners, have any other questions for the applicant?
What is the reason for not providing parking onsite? Because this, this is a separate property from the church, correct?
It's across the street.
But it's not part of the, I mean, it's a separate lot. So this joint use agreement for parking is for the person that's going to be renting it? What happens in the future when someone else uses this and they don't have that agreement?
That will be an agreement we'll have to have with the Leese to have parking, just as we're proposing to do with him.
Did I catch the intended use? What's the use of the building?
Accounting office.
Oh, okay.
It'll just be staff. It won't be open to the public or anything, really. It'll just be staff.
It was recently rezoned to office.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners? That answer yours? Not really?
I mean, I said, I don't know if you're fixing anything here with, with the joint use agreement, you're kind of kicking it down the road. I mean, getting by with this, but if somebody else other than Marshall is going to lease this property, what? Where do they park?
Either onsite or have another agreement with the church.
So they have to build onsite parking. But would that come back before? I guess.
If it was somebody else doing an onsite parking, they would, yes. But it wouldn't necessarily come back before y'all because that would be technically a small site that could be addressed at staff level.
Okay. I think that answers that question.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Since this is, this is a public hearing still, are there anyone to speak for or against this item? All right, CM nine, commissioners? Kick it back to you guys for discussion or a vote?
I make a motion that we approve it with the contingencies that we need, we need to make sure they have their agreements in this, the improvements are made for ADA stuff.
Okay. You got a motion to approve it with contingencies at staff as well as ADA. Any other discussion? Second now?
Second.
Second, from O'Gwen. Roll call vote, please, Laura.
Low?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
Excuse me. O'Gwen?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, seven zero, motion passes. All right, next item under new business.
An administration appeal, 29 Crooked Creek Drive, gravel driveway. Todd Gagnon. Okay, so this is an administration appeal. Y'all don't see these very often. So this is a situation where on August 16th of this year, the City of Cabot Code and the Code and Compliance Inspector observed a new gravel driveway had been installed next to the existing concrete driveway at 29 Crooked Creek Drive, and notice of violation tag was left on the front door of the resident. The resident was given 45 days to correct the violation. The resident came into the Public Works Office on April 17th of this year to dispute the notice of violation. The resident asked to speak to the Public Works Director about the gravel driveway as well as the right to appeal the decision. After speaking with the homeowner regarding the code violation, he decided on April 29th to submit an administration appeal. So this decision for this resident is strictly a code violation that he was given. He installed a gravel driveway adjacent to his existing concrete driveway. According to ordinance seven of 2018, the off-street parking requirements states that the minimum pavement requirement shall be either asphalt or concrete. And as you can see in the staff report, there, or not in the staff report, in the provided information, a Google image I had shown for November 15th of 2024, there was not a gravel driveway. Then a Google image from March 30th of 2025, the gravel driveway is shown to be installed. And then on April 16th of 2025, there's a picture from the Code Compliance Inspector that observed the gravel driveway installed, and that's its current state of the driveway. You can also see in the packet, the applicant's, his appeal, and he is here tonight to, to speak to you about this. So that is the background of why this is on the agenda and why it is before you since it was a violation that came out of administration. So those appeals do have to come before the Board of Adjustment for a decision. And Todd is here, he can come up and speak about it and then ask any questions, or if y'all have any questions for me.
Hi, my name is Todd Gagnon. And yeah, I purchased my house in 2015, and then about just over a year ago, we installed a gravel driveway. I have three teenage boys and we needed additional parking. We were using the area, it was grass as the parking area, but it gets very muddy and floods over there, so our cars were sinking. So I decided to find a cheap alternative. So we laid down the gravel, and like Ms. Laura said, in April, I got a notice of violation. I did not realize I was violating as many houses in our neighborhood have gravel driveways as is in my report. I did do look up a quote recently to see what it'd be like to convert it to a concrete driveway. The quote I got was from a Silver Star Construction out of North Old Rock. It was $6,750. We were trying to keep this cheap as I am a retired, assuming retired Air Force member. My wife's a teacher for Cabot Elementary, and I have three teenage boys, one's getting ready to go to college, the other two are in Cabot High School. That, it's a very expensive cost for us to endure, so I'm asking for the board to allow variance, allow us to keep our gravel driveway and not to tear it up and go through hardship of laying concrete down.
Todd, have you received multiple bids, or is that the only bid that you got?
I've received, I have another bid I received, and that one was for $5,000. But I, I only have the one printed out, the other one was for 5K as well. And then I asked another contractor, just talking word of mouth, and he said 5,500. So it seems to be kind of the going rate between that $5,000 and $6,000 range.
And so Laura, as far as the ordinance goes, I mean, everything, it cannot be any gravel, it has to be dust-free, either concrete or asphalt, per the ordinance.
Correct.
If I can add just one other thing, from the notice of violation I got, it talks about, the one I was quoted, it said this stop's going to park in off-street, and it says it's any type of permanent parking, signs of evidence by barren spot, or the presence of gravel surface, which I do have. But the very next paragraph of what I was cited for says for site plan and review, single family dwellings are exempted from this requirement unless the site plan and review is otherwise required. And by definition, a site plan and review states an authorization required for development projects to ensure they align with local regulations, community standards, and municipal codes. Even by what I was quoted for, I mean, I would not have known unless I came here that I was even violating it, because the next paragraph says a single family dwelling is exempt from this.
Yeah, do you, what he's quoting there, as far as the gravel?
So he, he's talking about where the off-street parking and loading requirements. So he's just quoting, he's talking about under site plans, there is a section, did you quote it under the site plans or under the off-street parking?
So I got quoted on that, it was actually ordinance number 40 of 2019, 410-1, and I'm quoting the next paragraph, 410-1, which is actually C, and it says that single family dwelling is exempt from it. And I didn't know either one of these existed until I researched.
So what you're quoting is under the site plan review for off-street parking and loading requirements?
Yep, for the establishment of parking, off-street parking and loading areas.
Right, but you were talking about the, the paragraph C is talking about site plan review. So single family dwellings, yes, are exempt from site plan review, but not exempt from the parking requirements.
Okay. Just by reading that, just because the paragraph B is what I was cited for, and the paragraph C says single family dwellings are exempt from that. That's, that's just my confusion on it, and I just thought, well, if that's the case, it explains why everyone like campground in my neighborhood all have similar parking areas.
Laura, since this is under your office as well, what does the inspectors do as far as cars parked in yards and that sort of thing?
So if, excuse me, so if they're parked in the yard, they, if, if they're not creating any barren spots, if they're not creating any ruts or anything, we don't have a regulation that says that you cannot park there, because we cannot show that that car has not moved within seven days. So if there's creating barren spots, then that's when they will get a notice that they need to show that that vehicle is operational and not an inoperable vehicle.
I did try to build it. If you can see, it is framed out. It's four inches thick of gravel. My drainage system is actually, I have photos of everything. It actually goes underneath the gravel. I do underlay, underlayment to stop weeds from coming through, and it is maintained as, you know, best as I can for gravel driveway versus, I don't know if you received my rebuttal, I just, like I said, I took a few photos of the neighborhood where there's many cars and lots, campers parked on the sides of houses. I have another one of a guy who weighed down gravel with no drainage, and it, it looks terrible. I was trying to, excuse me, I was trying to keep a professional look. Like I said, I don't want to bring down the value of our own neighborhood or my own house. I, we are very invested in Cabot, and I'd hate to bring anything to spread it to our own neighborhood.
Sure. But we appreciate the spirit of trying to make it look professional and that sort of thing. I think most people that put something down like that don't know about the codes or the ordinances, and that's normally out of Laura's office in terms of issuing permits and that sort of thing. If it is paved in concrete, Laura, is there a variance that's required for the overall width of the driveway, or is that?
So the maximum width of the driveway can be 30 feet. On his particular driveway, max can be 30 feet.
What's the?
Once, within the right of way. And once you get out of the right of way, you can widen that.
Yeah. What is the current width of that driveway?
So my driveway, you can't top in that picture. Since that doesn't connect to the street, my actual driveway is, I believe, 22 feet, but then that cuts up behind the sidewalk, as you see, and that maximum width is 33 feet and nine inches to be exact.
So the gravel portion is behind the sidewalk?
No. There's probably at least 10 or 12 feet behind the, maybe not quite. So it's about where the utility boxes are.
The electric box is probably.
That's within the easement. There, so you're going to have your right of way, and then you're going to have your easement, so the right of way is probably actually right up to those utility boxes. Yes.
So what are the options, Laura, for this to be hard surface within the right of way, asphalt or concrete?
Correct. Well, even on his property, unless you keep, unless you give him the variance to, for the gravel to remain.
I meant to be in compliance on his property, it needs to be asphalt or?
Correct. Yes. And technically, he is wider than he's supposed to be.
In the right of way.
Correct.
About three feet.
About three, but just in, three, three feet, nine inches.
For that five feet up to the utility box.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for applicant?
Did you get any bids on asphalt instead of concrete?
I couldn't, I don't know of any asphalt. I mean, I searched first Google search and then, you know, Facebook Marketplace for everything. That's rare. Usually I find cheaper going that way. I couldn't find anything for asphalt. So the next was concrete, and that was, I mean, it's pretty expensive. It was out of our side of our range. Like I said, we had been parking there, and the vehicles sinking, I was like, man, we have to do something in order to fit both my son's cars now.
Yeah, I've got a couple names for you if we get to that point.
Yeah, I would think that asphalt would be a little cheaper than concrete.
How many parking spaces do you actually need on the side? Because I noticed you've got a trailer there that's parked almost all the way to the back of your fence on the, the side of the house, and there's on your picture where your measurements are, you've only got one truck parked on that gravel driveway. So how many spots do you actually need there, lengthwise?
We have a total of four cars. My oldest two boys, both have vehicles, and then my wife and myself. And then we do have a trailer, but we're getting ready to move that actually into the backside because of, I'm afraid the teenage boys, just makes me worry about them parking.
Yeah, as a dad of three, I've seen that. We, for a while, our driveway looked like a, you know, used car parking lot, but.
Before we had that, my son did park on the street, and his car got broken into the very first day. So that's what also sped it. It's lucky the neighbors caught it on camera with their camera setup. So I was like, well, we have to do something different.
Yeah. What I was getting to is a temporary problem. I mean, go, go off, and all of a sudden you got your driveway back. You hope, right?
Or wow.
Yeah. Any other questions for applicant?
Well, my concern for the board, my concern is there's a lot of houses in this subdivision, and we're going to set a precedent if we approve this. We'll have to approve everybody. So why do we have the rules?
So do we know if his examples have been cited as well? Because some of them are obvious, some of them with their car, it's hard to say, but the camper that hasn't moved or the gravel one. Although the gravel one, I think, is in Woodbridge behind you.
It is.
The one with the concealed weapons sign in.
Correct. I think we identified all the addresses and all have been, again, the camper that we located, that one at the time hadn't created any barren spots. This one on Woodbridge, I don't remember if we, on that one, if it had a gravel prior to, because if you had a gravel driveway prior to March of 2018, you were in the sense allowed to keep it as long as you maintained that gravel driveway. So.
Does owning the house in 2015 count as grandfather clause?
So you had a bag or two of gravel down at that point, you're saying?
We did not have gravel at 2015, no, sorry. I wish I did, but I was unaware. My boys were too young at the time.
Then, if you had to add to it.
Because I had somebody else that had to, that they got a notice and that they claimed that they had gravel prior to 2018. I went back to all the way to 2010, I believe it was, and there was no gravel shown, but he said that he didn't maintain it and that the grass grew over it. Well, that's not. If I can go back to 2010 and there's no gravel driveway, then unless you have pictures to prove that there was a gravel driveway prior to 2018, Google Earth is the only thing that I have to use to justify the date.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Ty.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak for or against this item? All right, CM nine, commissioners, any more discussion? All right, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, that was from Connect? Oh, Low, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Bird. Roll call vote, please, Laura.
O'Gwen?
No.
Low?
No.
Prater?
No.
Connect?
No.
DeArman?
No.
Bird?
No.
Young?
No. That's zero seven, so that fails to pass for variance. If you do want some names of some local, either concrete or asphalt folks, I've got a couple. I could get it to Laura, Laura could get it to you, or have you on stage after the meeting, glad to share that with you. All right. We'll go ahead, and it is 7:27, we'll adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting, and we'll open up our Planning Commission meeting with the first item of business, a final plat. Laura?
Final plat, Allison's Landing, Max Irving. Okay, so this is a final plat for a two-lot subdivision split. It's located about at the 3,400 block of Highway 89 South. It's currently zoned R1. The property owner, the develop, excuse me, the developer is wanting to split the existing lot into two lots. There is a, an existing house on one of the lots. There's currently a driveway accessing that existing house. There are a couple outstanding items in the staff report that can be easily addressed with the applicant as far as tying some easements down. This piece of property did, does, I won't say did, does have a lot of utility easements, different utility easements at the front of the property. First Electric has an easement, the gas line has an easement, there's a sewer line, there's a water line, every utility that can possibly be on this property is located out front. So it's just a matter of getting all those easements tied down to where they can be reproduced again by somebody else. Other than that, those are the only outstanding items in the staff report. The applicant is here if you have any questions for him.
All right, is applicant want to address the Planning Commission? You would state your name?
I'm Chris Maxwell.
Chris, anything else want to provide additional color to?
Lot of easements, but Laura pretty much covered it. If y'all have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions about the replat? I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Commissioner Prater?
Second.
Second from DeArmond? A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Connect?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. Seven zero, motion passes. Final plat's approved. All right, next thing, community input. Anyone have anything for the Planning Commission? Any announcements in-house? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, we'll see you next month. Thanks, everyone. 7:30. Compared to your seven or eight minutes.
Longer, I suppose.